Good evening. Before we begin tonight, we'd like to remember a lifelong resident and a former park parking officer who has recently passed away at the ripe old age of 91, and that was Cliff Martellini. A moment of silence, please, in his memory. Thank you. Please join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilor Bryan is passing. Councilor Shan?
Present.
Councilor Tontar?
Here.
Councilor Vogel?
Present.
Councilor Zee?
Here.
Councilor Devlin?
Here.
Councilor Agaman?
Here.
Councilor Junta?
Present.
Councilor Khan?
Present.
Councilor McCauley?
Here.
Councilor Connell?
Present.
We have a quorum. Are there any late filed items?
There are two late file items that councils will see on their desk. There is a communication from Rabbi Matthews to use a menorah as the Ahavis Akim congregation has done in the past. There is also a request of a late file by Councilor Shan for the Bartlett Mall resolution.
Motion to waive the rules and accept late files?
Second.
Second. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
I should also mention, Mr. President, excuse me, that the fire chief has submitted a supplemental information with respect to the fire boat, I believe, and that's on your desk also.
Would you care to amend your motion to include that additional late filed item? So moved.
Second then.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So those items will be taken up in the regular order. Public comment, please. Lucky tonight, just two speakers tonight, starting off with Jane Snow.
Good evening. Jane Snow, Nine Coffin Street. I just wanted to speak in favor of the gift of the fire boat. We have a tremendous amount of people who use the river with boats during the summer and fall, and I just think it would be a great addition to the fire department, and we are very fortunate that we have gentlemen on the fire department that can maintain the boat. So I think it's a win-win both ways around, and I would ask you to consider allowing them to accept this wonderful boat that we have. And secondly, I wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving. I hope if you travel, you have safe travels. Eat all you can eat. This is the one day that it's good for, and have a safe holiday. Thank you.
William Shuttleworth.
Thank you, folks. I'm William Shuttleworth. I live at 20 Market Street. I just completed a walk across the country, and as part of that, I was -- received an email from a gentleman that witnessed the death of Bobby K. Parker, who was the first boy to die in the Vietnam War as a resident of Newburyport on November 30, 1969. I don't think that day should go unnoticed. I think that was a young man that would be my age today. He would have had a life of children, grandchildren, a career, a life, and was snuffed out by a war that's oftentimes considered controversial and regrettable. I'd like to think that Newburyport, the home of the Coast Guard, a city deeply dedicated to veterans, would honor his passing and the 50th anniversary by issuing a resolution of some sort to recognize that that young man's life did not forfeit without being recognized. And I know Kevin Hunt, who is a dear colleague of mine, has always been following Bobby K. Parker, and he and I hope that you would recognize that. Thank you.
It's time for the mayor's comment. One moment. Mayor, I'm gonna just --
Okay, order.
Mr. Hunt speak as well to this matter as long as he's present and able. Come on up.
I will be very brief. My name is Kevin Hunt. I am the veteran agent for the city of Newburyport. I am obviously totally in favor of this. I also am a Vietnam veteran, and I'm very aware of recognition when it occurs, and so here is recognition for a Vietnam veteran, and I really appreciate that. On Friday, I'll be -- and William and I will be meeting with a gentleman who was a part of Bobby's company in Vietnam, and he's coming into town. He's flying all the way from Tampa just to honor his grave on Saturday morning. So he was thrilled to hear that a community would actually come together and consider doing something like this, so thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I'm going to flip the order a little bit and take up the resolution for Robert Bobby Parker now. So I'm gonna ask the clerk to read the resolution, if he may.
Be happy to, Mr. President. Whereas Robert K. Bobby Parker was the first Newburyport resident to die in the Vietnam War. Bobby died on November 30, 1969, in the jungles of Vietnam when a booby trap triggered by enemy forces blew up on a hillside in Bin Dean Province. And whereas Bobby was born on July 5, 1948, to Leslie and Helen Parker, who lived on 25 Mosley Avenue in Newburyport. And whereas Bobby graduated from Newburyport High School in 1966 and was recognized as an exceptional baseball player. Whereas Bobby served in Vietnam for 19 months at the time of his death, he loved the Vietnamese people and felt strongly that he was doing something very worthwhile, quote, "helping someone else," close quote. Bobby led an army patrol into the jungle, dug up and captured a lodge, weapons, cash, saving no doubt countless lives. Whereas the city of Newburyport dedicated a Little League field located between Dawes Street and Jefferson Street in Newburyport and named it the Robert K. Parker Field. After a number of years, the park was demolished and replaced by the Parker Ridge condominium complex. Now, therefore, the Newburyport City Council, in honor of the 50th anniversary of his death, hereby formally names November 30, 2019, as the Robert K. Parker Day, and hereby authorizes a special plaque in honor of his service at the Veterans Memorial Park in Newburyport. Submitted, Councilor Barry Ann Connell and others, I'm sure.
What is the other council? Do you like an emergency preamble to take this up this evening?
Yes. Technically, we would need one if you want approval of it.
Okay, so moved.
So that would be a vote on the emergency preamble to waive the charter provision to allow it to be considered on the first night?
Please.
We actually don't need a roll call, Mr. President.
All right. Without a roll call, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to approve?
Second.
Moved and seconded, approved. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, councillors. Thank you for the motion.
Thank you.
Mayor Holliday. Your turn.
Thank you, Council President Connell, members of the city council. A few updates this night -- tonight. In your packet, you will see a transfer request for $15,500. This is a portion of the request that was submitted by the Greater Newburyport Community Hub relating to the ordinance that you have submitted in past requiring more video recording of boards and commissions. We are -- our goal is to start this in January, once we need to hire two staff to work 60 hours a month. There is not enough resources at the Greater Newburyport Community Hub in order to film these ZBA and the planning board, which are the first two that we'd like to start with. And they also need -- there is a request in there for a editing piece of equipment they need to upgrade their system to be able to do additional recordings and have them look decent when they post them on YouTube. So I would appreciate your consideration of that transfer. The PCB cleanup on the Clipper City Rail Trail, there's been, you know, just putting all the pieces together that are required to do this cleanup. It's taking a little bit longer. We had hoped to start sooner, but the tentative date, excuse me, start date is December 2, and with completion by the end of December. The one piece is that there is a new staff person from National Grid who is working with the cleanup, and because there are underground electrical wires that run through there, they're requiring that there be a vacuum excavation of test pits every 25 feet in order to ensure the safety and integrity of the electrical system there for National Grid. The one issue that's still outstanding is that we apparently need a -- where is it?
Waste transfer.
Thank you. A waste transfer tax, and they're having difficulty finding anybody at EPA who can give them that number, and that number goes on all of the documents in order for them to move forward and begin the cleanup. So that could be the one piece that is, if it's not identified within the next, like, 48 hours, it could end up pushing the project out into January. I will keep you posted on that. This vacuum piece of equipment that's being used every 25 feet will happen on non-consecutive days, but from my understanding from Jordy, probably two days of this work, and it is extremely loud, so that we want to be sure that the Ward Counselor knows anyone in that neighborhood on the day that that machine is going to be used, and we certainly will be sure of the police, you know, people at City Hall who are answering phones, as well as the Ward One Counselor has that information. The Cutter Fire Station, the planning office is working on a revised proposal with Winter Street Architects to move to the alternative site that we've identified for the new fire station. We have a balance of about $15,000 in that account for the original design allocation, and we anticipate that we'll be requesting an additional $35,000 to $40,000. The next step in the process is to get the site surveyed. In terms of tonight, I am hoping that you'll be taking out of committee the Department of Justice opioid grant. Just wanted to let you know that the drug-free communities grant that we had for two five-year cycles was also a Department of Justice grant, that we worked out the drug-free communities for 10 years with a very, very favorable results, and this led to the Tower Foundation funding, which is where the city also serves similarly to this grant from the Department of Justice as a fiscal agent and a lead partner in that grant. This is a very, very important grant program for the city and the region to be able to track and provide support and assistance for addicts and those who have overdosed. This is an expansion of a program that already exists that is highly successful and that we've been joining more and more hospitals and police departments in this process. The DOJ supported the regional model that we developed, and I strongly encourage your support for this program. It is a very significant tool for us to help to address this epidemic in our region. Link House last week, very excited that this is the first program that, new program that has been developed by Link House in many, many years. The ribbon cutting was last week for their new clinic. It's a center for behavioral health and addiction treatment services at the Boston North Technology Park in Amesbury. In addition, today, they closed on the former Dare House on Low Street that was for unwed teens and pregnant teens, and so that program closed. Link House is taking it over and developing a sober house for women, another program that we really need. Congratulations to Link House. There's a lot of concern on Plum Island after the two tropical storms that hit in October, and several meetings have happened out there with residents and other stakeholders. We're looking particularly, reservation is the top priority, then the center groin, and then south of Blue. We have outreach to Lieutenant Governor and to MIMA relating these concerns and a desire to declare a state of emergency for Plum Island. We were able to bring local and state elected officials, MIMA, CZM, Coastal Zone Management, and DCR and other key staff for discussion and a site walk on November 14. All that were there were in agreement on the grave nature of the situation at reservation terrace, and we will continue our collective efforts with the Mary MacRiver Beach Alliance, the Army Corps of Engineer, and our legislatures both state and at a federal level to begin to move forward to try and get some of the environmental bond money released to try and implement a plan that Netco had recommended several years ago when DCR recommended that we do nourishment and grass planting first. We've done that twice. It hasn't worked. Now we need another plan to protect the properties out there. Couple upcoming mayor's public meetings. Phillips Drive, December 3 at 6:30 at the Senior Community Center, and our snow management meeting on December 12, 7 o'clock here at City Hall. I would also like to wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving and safe journey to all of you who are traveling, and of course, our Clippers, even though we've got the same record, six and two, as Amesbury, we know that Amesbury just is not successful playing on a tar field, and that's where they're playing this year. So I suspect that we'll have a rousing Thanksgiving Day rally with Amesbury and Newburyport teams tomorrow at the Elks at noon, and please come and enjoy the football game on Thanksgiving morning. Also, is our tradition in the city, the Sunday after Thanksgiving is the lighting of the Christmas tree, and Santa Claus comes in on the Coast Guard boat, so please come and join. If you'd like to walk in the parade with me, meet me at the NRA lot about 3:15, and we'll be throwing candy canes at the crowd and get up on stage and give Santa the key to the city and light the Christmas tree. So tis the season. And finally, one thing that I realized that I didn't give you a picture of or let you know that the city council president had asked that, because of all the intensive work that the councilors had done, working with the city on moving forward the intermodal facility garage, that he requested that the city council names be added to the plaque, and the plaque is up, and I thought you all liked to know that, and it looks quite nice. And finally, the other piece is that, would you please send me an email if you are interested in attending the Mass Municipal Association Annual Conference, January 24th and 25th, as I said? If I still have money left in my training budget -- no, I do. I will be happy to cover your attendance at the MMA -- sorry, MMA conference, so please send me an email. Questions?
Mayor, questions? Councilor Connell?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mayor, for the update. One of the requests I want to make on this, the loud noise that might happen during this work on the excavation, is being in that neighborhood, I know what is sometimes helpful are those traffic signs, the one with the LED. So if there could be anything like that, because I do know the residents around there would be very worried, and we would probably be hearing not only the counselor from Ward One, but I think my neighbors and myself, so, but I could let people know too, so something like that would be helpful.
Sure. Certainly. I think we could, you know, arrange for that to be planned.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. What should we do with the mayor's update?
Motion to receive and file.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is received and filed. I think it's time to go through the consent agenda, if the clerk will guide us along.
Be happy to. The consent agenda consists this evening of the approval of the minutes for the November 12 meeting. There is one transfer, transfer 65, free cash, $15,500, to meeting recordings, same amount, to go to budget and finance. There are four communications. First communication, 206, poll hearing, Bayberry Road, to go to public utilities. Communication 207, memo regarding the retirement board's supplemental expense budget. That says budget and finance. That's actually to be received and filed at the request of Councilor Junta. Communication 208, there's a Class II vehicle license, Plum Auto Works, to go to license and permits. Communication 209 is the Frigid Fiber Event App to be held January 26, 2020, to go to public safety. Appointments? First reading, none. The following items are removed from their respective committees without a motion approved. License and permits, communication 203, 204. Neighborhood and City Services, ordinance 42. Public Safety, orders 145, 146, and 149. Public Utilities, communication 200. And that with the one change is the consent agenda for the season.
Oh, sorry. You're saying it was amended for communication 207 to be in a receiving file instead of budget and finance?
Correct. That's true.
I think that needs to be a motion to amend. Counselor can pull out an item, but changing the consent.
Is that what our rules say?
I think so.
Consent agenda?
I never did.
A single counselor can pull an item, is my understanding. Somebody can correct me if I'm not.
Well, let's fill and suspend her.
Just make the motion amended, that's all.
Yeah, motion to amend.
Okay, so since it was -- I pointed out, motion to amend communication 207, and instead of it being budget and finance, it will be received and filed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is amended. Motion to approve as amended?
Second.
Second. Consent agenda?
Discussion.
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So we'll move on to --
What happened to my real question?
To our regular agenda. We have the mayor's update. We've already disposed of that. Appointments? Second reading, there are none. Orders? Order 9.
First order is free parking during the 2019 holiday season. City Council, in conjunction with the Office of the Mayor, suspends the collection of parking fees in all lots and the parking garage participating in the city's paid parking program from December 20 to December 25. A sign will be hung on parking kiosks stating, "Free parking, season's greetings from the citizens of Newburyport. Jointly submitted, Councilors Junta and Connell."
Excuse me.
Motion to waive the charter rules to approve in one vote due to the timing of this item.
Second.
And seconded to waive the rules, take this matter up in one vote. Any discussion? Councilor Junta?
There is a timing element here. We do want to let the chamber know as soon as possible that we are possibly waiving this, the parking fees, so we want to get it done tonight, avoid going to committee and then coming out in another meeting, so the chamber can get working on this immediately.
Councilor Zee?
Actually, this is just on the emergency.
Yes.
I'll wait, and thank you.
So everyone understands the motion? Does this require a roll call?
It doesn't, Mr. President.
Thank you. Then we'll take a voice vote on this matter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear no's. None of you. Now, do we have a motion on the -- Motion to approve?
Second.
Moved and seconded, approved. Discussion? Councilor Zee?
My only suggestion is, is there an appetite to consider just making this order December 20 to 25 every year? Because we've seemed to have done this several years, but it seems to become more of a matter of, of course, I don't know that it's ever been controversial. It hasn't been in the four years that I've been doing it. Maybe this isn't the time under an emergency, if people are not comfortable with that, but it seems like this is a festive thing we do and seems to be generally accepted as it's gonna happen, so instead of fighting these emergencies, and we can do it by order, which this is, we could just make it the 20th to the 25th, and then the council could rescind it at any time, as it can with any order it issues.
2019 and thereafter.
It's just a suggestion for consideration.
Even offer that as an amendment?
Suggestion or a motion, Counselor?
Well, I was gauging appetite, but I was getting positive vibes, so I'll make the motion, and I'll defer to the clerk for some awesome language.
Is there a second to that motion and make this an annualized event, and we'll put it as an order, and we'll --
No.
Seconded by Council Vogel. Discussion of the amendment. Councilor Agaman?
I'd rather not do it on an emergency basis, because for one thing, the dates are gonna change every year. Are we gonna do it for five days, seven days? I mean, I want to give it a little bit more thought. Also, one of the things we've been talking about with the chamber unofficially is, you know, maybe having amnesty for fees much longer than just holiday week, like maybe the dead of winter for all of January or all of February, so I kind of want to have that discussion together.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion?
I mean, who was my second on that?
I'll rescind.
Yeah, I mean, I'll withdraw. I don't think there's any need to force the --
I'll withdraw my second.
Yeah, okay. You can just pass it as it is tonight and consider it.
Thank you, Counselors. So the motion approved is still on the floor? Is on the table? Is on the floor, yes, I'm sorry. On the table would be something quite different. Any further discussion of the initial motion by Councilors Junta and myself to, well, Councilor Junta's motion, this proposal to have an amnesty on parking fees for the five days leading up to and including Christmas? Councilor McCauley?
I just have a question to the sponsor on this. Will this just be for the surface lots and include the garage as well?
Counselor Junta?
Yes, so the garage will be included this year, so we bought a wrap for the garage also that says, "Free parking, season's greetings from the citizens of Newburyport."
For those five days.
For those five days, so it'll be wrapped. Yep.
Then your greetings are over.
Further discussion? Councilor Khan?
Thank you, Council President. Sorry to belabor this, but I do remember last year, I thought we included December 26 for people who wanted to go return gifts, exchange gifts. So I was wondering if anyone would entertain that motion to amend to December 26.
So this is a motion to extend this to December 26?
Yes.
I'll second.
Seconded by Council Vogel. Discussion? Councilor Junta?
Yes, December 26 was on the original document, and after some deep thought and discussion, we decided to make it December 25, but it is the holiday season, so I think we should consider the 26.
So am I to take this as a friendly amendment that you're willing to accept without additional hoop jumping by the council?
Correct. Accepted.
Fair enough. Further discussion on the amended proposal? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, next up.
Actually, I think a motion approved in order as amended. Am I right?
Yes. I'm sorry. I stand corrected.
So it would be now from December 20 to December 26?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. I believe that, having that been a friendly amendment, we already voted on.
So we approved the amendment, but we haven't voted on the whole thing yet. I guess that's how we're doing this.
No, we did.
No, it was a friendly amendment, so we voted on the amended version, so that we've already acted on it.
But everybody understood that, that we voted as amended. Okay.
Is there any counselors who is in doubt? Okay. So we've disposed of this matter? Go to 160.
You've done that one.
So we are at 161, Mr. President.
I'm sorry. We have acted on that. Yep.
Which is, the city council approves and authorizes the acceptance of a preservation restriction between the city, the historic commission, Maritime Society for the property located at 25 Water Street. It is quite lengthy. It is, the agreement is attached, is on for a number of pages. It is submitted, Councilor Agaman.
Motion referred to planning and development.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Committee items, budget and finance.
162, Mr. President?
Oh, yeah, we got a couple.
I'm sorry. Do we have a late file? Richard, can you read that one, please?
I have it right here. 162 is a resolution relating to the support for the Parks Department and Parks Conservancy to design and construct an all-inclusive playground at the Bartlett Mall. Submitted, Councilor Shan.
Motion to move to Neighborhood and City Services.
Second. Moved and seconded to Neighborhood and City Services. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you for the correction, Counselor. We have a couple more. We have a couple more.
We have...
Let's go to it.
A late file.
Neighborhood and City Services.
Communication 210.
Yep.
Which is a letter, as I mentioned earlier, requesting the City Council to install a Hanukkah menorah in Market Square from December 22nd through December 30th. They plan to set up the menorah during the week of the 16th, and will leave it in place until January 5th. Submitted Alex Matthews Congregational Leader, Congregation Ahavis Akim, Newburyport.
Motion referred to Public Safety?
Second.
Motion, seconded to Public Safety. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's referred.
And then, do we want to treat the Fire Chief's memo? You mentioned it as a late file, it's not stamped in.
The Fire Chief, that's the supplemental information with respect to, I don't think it needs to be formally admitted, it already has actually been noted. Does not need to be voted on.
Yeah, that'll be Order 157, Budget and Finance. Budget and Finance?
Motion to remove Communication 192, 10-Year Financial Projection.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
Moved and seconded to receive and file. Discussion. Counselor Tanta?
Just quickly, we originally kept this in committee because we wanted to review the financial circumstances of the city. Subsequently, we have received, of course, updated information, the joint City Council School Committee Meeting in January, we get the mid-year financials, so we decided that we could receive and file this one, and next year have the opportunity to take many more looks at it.
Further discussion? Counselor Agman?
Yeah, I just have a question. So at the school committee meeting, I didn't quite catch from the PowerPoint by the Finance Director what his current projection was, so when we went through the budget process, I think it was 3.4 annually for 10 years, then when we were debating the streets and sidewalks, it was down to 3.1, I think? So I'm just wondering where he ended up last week.
Counselor Tanta, would you like to respond?
In the presentation, it was 3.2%.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor Tanta, anything else?
Motion to remove Order 154, Friends of Newburyport Youth Services Gift Acceptance, $11,000.
Second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's out.
Motion to approve.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion. Counselor Tanta?
Yeah, we discussed this in committee, the vote was three to zero to take it out. We had, the use of this money, of course, is in part for a scholarship, and also in part to fund a position of a rec person. In committee, we had two questions that we posed to the Director. One was whether or not this was a new position, and secondly, whether or not this is a normal means for funding. And so the answer from the Director was, this is not a new position, it's been a position that has existed in the past, that was paid for from fees. The Friends of Newburyport Youth Services wanted a little more clarity in defining what they go out and they ask people to contribute to, so if, you know, if you're a charity, it often helps if you can tell people that this money is going for a specific purpose rather than for general use. So they specified the rec position and the scholarship position. So again, three to zero with that, recommend to approve.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good, it's accepted.
Motion to remove Order 150, Opioid Addiction Treatment Prevention Grant Acceptance, 600K.
Second. Moved and seconded, I believe Counselor Z was first. Discussion. This is discussion of the motion.
Four years of practice.
This is removed from committee.
Removed from committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved, now it's Counselor Conster. Discussion, Counselor Tanta?
Yeah, we, again, the vote in committee was three to zero in favor of approving, subject to some questions that we put to the administration, to the Police Department in particular. The question, first of all, just to give you, this is $600,000 grant, I went on the Justice Department site, this is a fairly competitive grant that is a result of the Comprehensive Addiction and Recovery Act, it's, you know, from the federal government. Quote, "The purpose of the legislation that created the grant is to improve collaboration and strategic decision-making among regulatory and law enforcement agencies and public health entities to address prescription, drug, and opioid abuse, save lives, and reduce crime." And I think that's sort of a good summary of what the program is, its purpose is to reduce crime, save lives, and reduce prescription, drug, and opioid abuse. We had a couple questions, well, actually, one question related is, first of all, does the city as the lead agency in this, and this is countywide, do we have particular responsibilities? In committee, we asked for budget information, there is a budget line that will pay for the accounting services the city provides for, but we wanted to know whether or not there were further responsibilities. I would defer it to the Marshal, because he's here, thank you for being here, to provide the answers to that question.
The Marshal approach, please. And the question?
Good evening. The question is, are we prepared to do the reporting, and what is the liability of the department, of the city, actually? In that, let me just go in more detail, the fact that we are the lead agency, we're going to be distributing funds through, after a process, a decision is made to distribute them to third parties. My understanding is we're going to be a pass-through, so committee wants to know what liabilities do we face with that, and what are the reporting responsibilities?
Well, just to begin, so the history of the grant is, we weren't qualified, it's a 500,000 metropolitan population Ohio, so that's why we incorporate the county, and this is a county program, it's not our program. We started it, but we got the county involved. So that being said, we get awarded the grant, that grant is going to help, so the first piece was getting the computer program in place, which everybody's involved with now. That helps us communicate with every department in the county. Once we got that in place, now we have to go to the outreach piece of it. The outreach piece is working with places like the Pettingill House. The Pettingill House needs money, and we don't have the money to give them, so that's why we applied for the grant, and a lot of that grant is going to be dispersed throughout the county, and the plan is to create a advisory board of 12 to 14 members throughout the county, and include civilians from hospitals or whatever, and come up with a plan to disperse that money in the four hubs in the county. Basically, the Pettingill House serves nine of our communities surrounding us, all the way out to Georgetown, Grove, and so we've already got our hub, we go through the Pettingill. We got to identify three more, and we're doing that now. And the next step is to meet, decide how we're going to disperse this money, and all we're going to do is be the pass-through. Ethan's going to cut the checks to whatever social service agency we decide is that hub. And that's pretty much it in a nutshell. Liability-wise, we're already doing it, so I don't know what liability that would be.
Any questions from counselors, then? Thank you, Marshal. Counselor Z.
Can you just explain, so when you go to pick these new, the Pettingill equivalent in the other communities, is that going to be a procurement process under state law? And are we doing that, or we just pick one and then...
No.
Cut the check directly to that organization, or to the host community, which then, what's the path for the money, and what's the path for any agreements that may be made?
So there'll be an agreement with that particular hub of, the plan is to identify the agencies, like Lawrence uses a large agency, and we're hoping to get Andover and those communities involved in that, and to streamline it through that one agency, because some of these agencies don't have a Pettingill House, they don't have an agency to go to. So we need to, that's the plan now, is to give them the resource for that, and that helps them get the final piece. So as far as that goes, we decide how much money each community, like Lawrence and Methuen are obviously a lot larger than we are, and we'll disperse the money that way. That's going to be the advisory board responsibility, which incorporates everybody in the county. They're going to have representatives from, you know, most police departments, probably there's 14 total on the advisory board.
So the advisory board will say, okay, we've got this pot of money, and then they're going to take a vote and decide to award 200 to this community and 200 to that community, or I should say more directly, to the end organization that it's selected, whomever the Pettingill equivalent is in that area?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions? Counselor Agman?
Well, it sounds like the cheap benefit for our being the clearinghouse, the lead agency, is to make sure that our hub gets their share of the money, so I understand that. But also, it sounds like, since we've been doing work on opioid, the opioid crisis for years, you have in-house expertise that other departments don't? Is that really the logic for why your report is the lead agency? It's just a little odd, because we're so small, that we would, you know, why are we doing it for the whole county?
Well, the mayor asked to come up with a program, we developed a program, we saw this opportunity, and this is nothing, no Plymouth County does this. They originally started this computer program, so we decided, let's look into this. So we looked into this, and we took the lead on the whole county to introduce it to them, and they all thought it was a great idea. It was being completely funded, it was 30 grand, it got funded, I think, half by Pettingill House and half by Youth Services on one of the grants she had, and it's being paid annually by the Sheriff's Department. It's $5,000 annual fee, so we don't, I mean, that's how it all began, but that piece is in place already, but the last piece of the outreach work, social work is, they need funding, and we didn't have that piece. So that's what this was all about.
But the staff time in your department's already paid by these other grants, so you have a grant from Youth Services, you have a grant from the Sheriff's Department?
The program is paid, the program itself.
Okay.
The computer program, software.
Okay, but I'm just talking about the staff time, so the staff time...
We were doing this prior to creating these programs, we were already committing time to the opioid crisis. We started our STOPS program, if you can call that.
Yep.
And that was committed time by staff. So we've really been doing it all along, but this is just stepping it up, I guess, to another notch.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Tanta?
Can I just note that another advantage of the grant is that, you know, an individual could OD in Newburyport and be from some other community, and so by partnering with the other communities in Essex County, that reporting takes place so that individual who may live in another community will be visited by people in that community, by their hub, a police officer will attend that person, and the whole point of this is, once someone has that, an OD, all right, to divert them from the criminal system and to get them on a voluntary basis the help that they need. And I just, you know, talking to Inspector Sinclair and Dana, I mean, she showed in the development of this program incredible creativity and initiative in getting this. You know, again, it is relatively rare, Plymouth County does it, it was competitive grant, and it's shown some success both there and here.
And the piece of that is, along with the officer, is the outreach, the social worker, and that's the plan to have the whole county.
Right. Just one other thing to be clear, and we did get the budget, Inspector Sinclair's salary will be borne by the city, we're paying for that, that's not coming from the grant funds, so I understand that, and she had been doing it previously.
Right.
Counselor Agman again?
Yeah, and that's what I was, Counselor, that's what I was trying to ferret out, what we just heard, which is, I think it was Governor Romney, the administration that abolished county government, and this is really a county responsibility, that's all, all I'm trying to do, I'm not saying I'm going to vote against it, I don't think there's anything wrong, obviously, with the program, it does great work, we have, the opioid crisis affects Newburyport, it does, but I just want it clear on the record that essentially this is a county responsibility, and county government has been abolished. So the taxpayers of Newburyport, just so they know, they are bearing the salary for something that really should be borne by everyone in the county, and we are a pimple on that county, we are 18,000 people, we are not Lawrence, Lynn, or Abel, that's all I'm trying to ferret out. So now I know, so I understand, thank you.
Can I respond to that?
Go ahead, Marshal.
Each department in the county has a Danny Sinclair, so they're all bearing their responsibility, and every department has that person, so they're all paying their piece, so to say, so...
Thank you, Marshal. Counselor Z.
I just want to continue on that thread, though, so I read the grant, and it says that, you know, one person will be dedicated full-time, that's Inspector Sinclair from Understand, but that, in the second year of the grant, the intent is to hire somebody to be the, I think they called it a project manager or something like that, does that mean that we would expect some of the inspector's time to come back to Newburyport as that transition occurs? Or, I'm not reading it correctly?
The amended budget that I sent you?
Yeah.
That, it's been, you know, the original request was $1.2 million.
Right.
The $600,000 was granted, and so when Inspector Sinclair met with the grant, they rewrote it, and they decided that they did not need a project manager, so they took that out. I also questioned Inspector Sinclair about her time, exactly the question that the Ward Two Counselor raised, and she said, you know, I've been doing this for a number of years now, and it's really not much more work, it's not much more of a burden, and it was something she thought benefited the city by spreading the program countywide.
Are there any additional questions from counselors? Thank you, Marshal.
Thank you.
Not a question, I just...
Additional comments?
Yeah.
Discussion.
Well, I just wanted to stand up and say that I'll be voting in support, I did in committee, just with a couple of, I guess, comments to add for the record, is that it is based on my understanding that, A, we're not putting an undue burden on anybody in the Newburyport Police Department to sort of, to do this, that, B, we're not incurring really any additional costs, and that any additional cost will be paid for out of the grant, that was one of the portions we discussed about having an administrative line, which now exists, and that, you know, we feel confident that there isn't any exposure for the city in terms of disgruntled parties who may not be awarded monies, or, you know, or that may travel through the path of this that are unhappy in any way, so those are sort of my conditions for approving, and I wanted to put them on the record. Certainly, it's not any argument about whether it's a good thing or whether it's a need in the community, I think I'm just probably echoing some of the Ward Two Counselor's concerns, which is, what is Newburyport's role in the county? And that's what we were asking the Marshal about, and I think we're, I'm satisfied enough to vote for it. Thank you.
It's important to have those questions answered. Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, counselors. Anything else, Counselor?
Motion to remove Order 155, Plum Island AED Gift Acceptance, $2,603.98.
Second. By Counselor Z. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's out.
Motion to approve.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion. Counselor Tanta?
Yeah, the recommendation from committee was a three to zero vote to approve, believe the Fire Department has already held a training session, it has been installed out there, and they were able to find a telephone line, so it's connected to the Fire Department. If, very unfortunately, someone needs it, I guess they trigger a code that goes to the Fire Department, Fire Department opens it up, so there's access to the defibrillators, they can be used.
To call to get the code.
They call to get the code.
Yeah.
Right? From that site. And then the, and the fire department also would turn out in response to that call. So again, we've seen this before. The advocates for it came out, and there'll be two locations, one in Newburyport, one in Newburyport.
Was there a vote in committee?
3-0 in favor.
Thank you, Councilor. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very well. Next item.
Motion to remove Order 157 Fire Boat Gift Acceptance.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilor Khan. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's out.
Motion to approve as amended, and I will give you the amendment, once I get a second.
As amended in committee?
As amended in committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion.
So first, as amended in committee, at the end of the statement, the following sentence will be added, quote, "The current 41-foot fireboat shall be disposed of forthwith," close quote. I can provide it to the clerk. So as amended, the vote in committee was 3 to 0. We asked a number of questions of the chief, who is here to answer further questions tonight, and I appreciate additional information he gave. First, in terms of the need, the chief indicated that there, this is something that has been requested by the marinas in town. There are approximately 2,000 boats in the harbor during the summer, millions of dollars worth of value on the river. The 41-footer needs a lot of work. It's 42 years old. It would need a lot of repair work. The pumps aren't working, as well as one would expect. The Metalcraft 32-foot Firestorm in the Chief's Ridge is faster, more maneuverable, can go in shallow water, has no draft, and is a better platform for dive work as well. And the chief had mentioned the number of incidents over the past years, and maybe you could get into that in a moment. Staffing, the second point, establishing needs, staffing, the 42-year-old 41-foot boat required a staffing of four. This requires a staffing of two, all right? So there are some savings entailed in that. What happens when there's a call? Firefighters go out, who are on duty, go out to the boat, and other firefighters are called in to replace them in the station, all right? So that's overtime expense when they're called out. According to the chief, there are no mechanical problems that he knows of with the boat. Estimate, and I know, I think he maybe changed that, was maybe $5,000 to $10,000 for maintenance work per year on the vessel, and he noted that a lot of that work is done in-house by firefighters, as was done on the 42-foot boat. And the chief's estimate was that maintenance for the new boat would be less expensive than maintenance on the 41-foot boat.
Thank you, Councilor. Further discussion? Chief and Claire, would you want to address this proposal? Are there any elements about it that you'd like to point out, things that we've missed in the presentation by the chair?
Thank you, just, thank you, President Callen, members of the council, just to point out that we got this boat government surplus in 2015, and although some councilors, like the council president, had some concerns that it may be too big, it did allow us to have a platform in the river where we were able to fight four boat fires that I remember, and a couple of island fires out in the river that we can't get to by road, and served as a platform for the police-fire dive team. It would require some modifications to make it easy to get on and off the boat, because obviously the boat wasn't designed for a dive team. We know that the engines will need some overhaul, along with the pump. It gets 42 years old, they don't last forever. In the process of trying to figure out how to overhaul the 41-footer, this opportunity came up. Having been the one that ordered this boat when it was brand-new, I know everything about it, I know what it's been through, I know what it cost to operate, and I'm even qualified to drive it. It is a much better platform for our use, for not only fire and rescue in the river, and it has no draft, and those that have experience with boats in the river know that if you make the wrong move in the river, your lower unit is going away. This boat doesn't have one. It's a much better boat for us to get around the river and in between the docks and all the places that we have to go, and also serves as a better platform for our dive team. So I think it's, I don't see any more expenses than what we've had. A memo I gave you in 2015, when I asked for your acceptance of the 41-footer, I estimated about $10,000 a year in extra costs for maintenance. We've never spent anywhere near that, and we do have a few of our personnel that have been on the river their entire lives, that know how to operate boats and take care of them, and they spend a tremendous amount of hours. Some of you saw the 41-footer when we got it, and compared to what it looks like today, it's totally different. Different colors, it's maintained, it's got all the equipment on it, and most of that was done on a volunteer basis. They do put some hours in the books and overtime for maintenance, but nowhere near the amount of time they spend on it. So I appreciate your support of this.
Thank you, Chief. Councilor Jenta?
I just, Chief, while you're up, I just wanted to ask you a couple of questions. So what's interesting about this boat is this boat's pretty well documented, so I had a chance to read through some of the newspapers in Portsmouth and in Newcastle, and in those stories, there were discussions, they talked about mechanical problems with this particular boat. One of the articles mentioned anywhere from about 15K to 50K a year with problems. One of them mentioned that the boat had some problems dealing with salt water. Can you address those? I know there was a gap of time from when you got the boat until now, but reading those articles, I got a little bit shaky on the boat. I agree with you that this type of boat is kind of boat that you want to work off of. I'm just a little concerned about this particular boat. So could you talk to those stories?
Absolutely. Without getting involved too much in another town's politics, this Metalcraft Marine boat, if you look in any major city, Boston, Philadelphia, any major port, you're going to find Metalcraft Marine boats. They are made for salt water, they're made as fireboats. They're very reliable, probably one of the top manufacturers in North America. Our department is very fortunate, both in our apparatus repair and our boats and everything else around our station. The guys are very talented, and they do a lot of the work themselves. We don't send out 50% of what we do. In other communities, everything that was done on that vessel was done by a vendor. The personnel that used it were not interested in taking care of their own equipment and sent everything out. If we pulled this out of the water and sent it out to a vendor for everything that it needs, yep, it's going to cost us a lot of money. No different than the 41-footer or any other piece of equipment that we have. We're very fortunate for the dedication of our own personnel. I don't expect our expenses to increase. This boat is more efficient, it's newer, there's two newer Cummins diesels onboard. But it's like anything else, if you don't take care of it, it's going to cost you money in the long run. So I don't expect to have any issues with the boat. Did I answer your question, sir?
Yes. Further discussion or questions from the councilors?
Just a little bit of a correction. I did read those articles, too, and that $50,000 figure included the overtime, all right? And the actual maintenance was, I was actually trying to find the article again, it was closer to 15,000, 20,000 for maintenance. I don't think, I mean, there was a subsequent article that clarified that, because they asked it.
Councilor Jenta?
Yeah, I actually read three different articles, I believe, two from Portsmouth, one from Newcastle, and the amount of costs on maintenance varied. Some of them had it as a lower cost, some of them had it at a higher cost. But I was really concerned about the note in the article that had mentioned that was having problems with salt water. I believe I read in the article that it was supposed to be heading to freshwater. It was supposed to be heading up to Winnipeg. But I don't know what happened, but, you know, there it is in Newburyport. So I just want to make sure, as a city, we're making a good decision. This is a great style boat for us to have in the community. I just want to make sure that this is a good boat for us to have. That's all.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councilor Zede?
Yeah, very similar to my comments on the opioid grant. You know, I can vote yes, and just sort of the reason why I vote yes is, number one is the assurances that have been given on the condition of this boat, which the Ward Five counselor is kind of poking around at a little bit. The idea that, you know, honestly, the maintenance is a little bit of heartburn, only because I'm not sure it's a good strategy to rely sort of on the generosity of essentially firefighters to do things sort of and put in for less time. But that seems to be working at the moment. The two things I think I question most are, one is the priorities. Obviously, we have a department with a fairly substantial need, we all know that, in Station Two, and just trying to decide, you know, is this where we want to be headed? But again, that's counterbalanced by the idea that the maintenance will sort of be in line with where we've been. And the last thing is, I do have to express some frustration about the timing. The boat is here, from what I understand, and we had a similar sort of path, if you will, last time, and I don't think that should go without being mentioned, at least, is that the whole point of having this exercise is to have the discussion, and we may come to one conclusion, we may come to another, but timing is important. And so having, and clearly, I read some of the same articles as I searched for it, and clearly it was controversial in other communities to varying degrees. So I'll be voting yes, and those are some of the thoughts on why. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Further discussion from the councilors? Councilor Khan?
Thank you, Council President. Yes, being another member of the Budget and Finance team here, we did ask a lot of questions, and I have to, I just want to add my voice of support with the counsel from Ward One on the timing. And I do wonder what we could do to send a message to the body about, if there's a way we could talk to departments, maybe if they anticipate something like this, to bring it before us, would be helpful, because that's the first I heard that it's already here. So I would just like to offer support. I do think that would be really helpful for us to be able to make the decision in advance. So I do want to lend support.
Chief and Claire, would you like to approach again, please?
Thank you, Council President. Just so there's no air of disrespect from the fire department, I did not know this opportunity was coming. It was offered to me, and one of those things that I had to get permission from the state of New Hampshire, being a federal grant bought with federal money that went to the state of New Hampshire, whether or not it would be allowed to go below the border. Because we're part of the Sico-Cheese Mutual Aid District, which is 42 communities in three states, and we still serve mutual aid to all of those communities, that they didn't see it as going across state, they saw it as just going next door, and it would still serve all of that area still. Winter's coming, they had to make a decision to get rid of the boat, because unlike our community with marinas that pull our boat and launch it and store it for free, Wentworth Marina was charging the Newcastle Fire Department every month to keep that boat there. So time was of the essence. If I could have done it a different way, I would have done it, but it was the only choice I had. Certainly wasn't going to let the opportunity go by. If for any chance the council voted to not take it, it would just go back.
Thank you, Chief. Councilors, is that response adequate? Thank you. Further discussion? Further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
One no. Councilor Tantara, anything else in committee?
That's it for tonight.
License and permits? Excuse me, general government, nothing. License and permits? I'm sorry, Councilor.
Motion to collectively approve Communication 203 and 204.
Second. Moved and seconded.
I was actually pointing to Counselor Vogel.
Oh, I thought you were calling my attention to something else. You were kind of pointing to the top of your head, and I thought the sheen was actually catching me in the eye.
Thank you.
Counselor Vogel?
Thank you, Mr. President. The reason why I asked that these be collectively approached is because they are routine approvals year after year. It was voted favorably 2 to nothing in committee. We rely on the clerk for feedback of these, both of these entities, if there are any complaints or are there any issues with them. And over the course of the years, we have some discussions here and there, but with regard to this specifically, these two specifically this year, there have been no issues or any complaints through the clerk's office.
Hearing none? Is this a roll call?
No.
License and permits?
No.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very well. Anything else, Councilor?
Nothing further, thank you.
Neighbor and City Services?
Yes, Mr. President, already out from the consent motion to approve Ordinance Number 42, which is related to the Bartlet Mall parking, Newburyport Court of Ordinances for Parks and Playgrounds.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion, Councilor Zede?
Sure. So to give a little bit of background and the committee discussions and votes, as most folks know, there was a Bartlet Mall Commission, and that Bartlet Mall Commission was working on for some time, sort of a master plan for Bartlet Mall with the general overarching theme to bring the Bartlet Mall back to what it historically was. And may remember, we had Charles Griffin come in, and that's the next part of the story, which is when the Parks Ordinance was redone by this council. The Bartlet Mall Commission was dissolved, as was the Atkinson Common, and each received sort of a seat on the Parks Commission, if you will, and that was Mr. Griffin's position. So he came in and presented to us. Since that time, the work has, I guess you might say, continued, and the Parks Commission has felt, from what I understand, hearing from the chair, sort of responsibility to see that through. There wasn't initially any funding to move that forward, but through a process, a permitting process on a project in the city, a developer made an offer to rework essentially what was the old basketball court and is now a new basketball court, to reduce its size, redo the asphalt. Most of us have probably driven by there and seen it. And so this is how we are where we are today. When we codified the ordinance, of course, we absorbed sort of all these things that were, some of them were sort of haphazardly done over the years, some of them were officially done and then sprawled across our ordinance, and one of those was the permissiveness or permission for snow emergency parking to be done on the Bartlet Mall. Now that that work has been completed, obviously, parking is no longer able, it's no longer physically possible to park through the Bartlet Mall, not the least reason of which is three stones, three boulders that block the entrance. And so, and the Ward Three Counselor can certainly chime in to correct me where I've heard, but this basically removes that from our ordinance to make it consistent with what's actually physically there now. The committee did meet on this twice. The first committee meeting, the discussion was sort of around how this relates to a sort of companion idea, if you will, and public safety related to potentially allowing emergency snow parking, or not, I shouldn't say emergency, but snow parking on Greenleaf, and that's still working its way through its process. This is a meeting which was held last week. I think the, sort of generally, the committee agreed that we could decouple them, and they're both going to go their own separate ways anyway. So it does come out of committee 2-0, and that's the committee report, if I can editorialize a little bit. I'm very personally conflicted about it. I don't know what to do. Again, timing is the theme of the night. The work's already been done. I think there was an assumption the council would come along. I don't, my recollection, having been on for two terms, is that this was very controversial, removing snow parking from the Bartlet Mall, but I chose to support it in committee because at this point, honestly, there is no way back there, and now we need to, and the Ward Three Counselor is diligently working to try and make accommodations, to try and ease that change or ease that transition. So that's where we stand. If there's anything I missed or messed up, I'm sure I will be corrected. Thank you.
You got a two thumbs up with this bill of eve, or you know?
Any thumbs up as you can get, so.
You'd be killing it with the box office. Further discussion? Councilor Shannon?
Thank you. Very good summation, Counselor from Ward One. I would like to let folks know that we are not going to bring the ordinance out of public safety tonight, that we are going to keep it in committee for another few weeks, just to make sure that the snow emergency parking that we initially had on Greenleaf Street, the community has asked us to move it to Auburn Street. I just want to give a chance to talk to the community about that, since it is now going to be impacting some, a few curb cuts down the street, so, but we are trying to make accommodations, as the Ward One Counselor said, to make sure that those who are impacted by not having snow emergency parking at the Mall anymore will have something closer than the garage. So, thank you. And I hope you vote for this.
Thank you, Councilor. Further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very well.
Mr. President?
Yes. Yes.
I think it's an ordinance. It's an ordinance. Your roll call for Ordinance 42?
42. Take a roll call vote. Avoid that previous voice vote, please.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tantar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Zede?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Agaman?
Yes.
Counselor Jenta?
Yes.
Counselor Connel?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Connel?
Yes.
Anything else in Neighborhood City?
First reading.
Just a quick, one-minute comment. So the committee also met last week on Communication 196, which was related to road and sidewalk, road and sidewalk work on Merrimack and High Streets. That was a letter from the Ward Four Counselor Tantar, as well as the other one from Newburyport Liverpool Streets. We had a nice conversation, and I think we had some good ideas that we brainstormed. The output of that was a memo that was sent to the mayor, asking for some information, and also to open up, hopefully, what we feel will be a collaborative process on potential ordinance changes or potentially new ordinance, helping with this. So I just wanted to let Counselors know, as we're getting late into the year. And then the other one I wanted to mention is that, just to remind, the mayor mentioned it during our update, but that the Phillips Drive meeting, Machie will be hosting, is next Tuesday, December 3rd, if I believe I have that correct. I think as a committee, we'll just sort of likely go, some of us or all of us will go, and then we'll figure out where the Council kind of fits in thereafter. It is just a communication, but it's a community of the whole, that's why I'm notifying you on that as well.
For clarification, that December 3rd meeting is at 6:30 PM at the Senior Community Center.
And that's it, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, Planning and Development.
Motion to remove Order 86.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to receive and file.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion. Counselor Agaman?
Yeah, it was meant to be in the packet last time, but I overlooked that, that's my error. Again, this order has been essentially withdrawn by the Affordable Housing Trust.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion. Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else, Counselor?
Motion to remove Order 156, acceptance of Colby Farm Open Space.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve.
Second. Moved and seconded by Counselor Jenta. Discussion, Counselor Agaman.
We had a very abbreviated committee hearing about this with Andy Port, the Planning Director. This is really just the final step in an arrangement that the Council already approved. So the idea was to concentrate residential development along Colby Farm Lane, and in exchange, much of the open fields would be deeded to the city, but we have to formally vote on that by a supermajority. There is some hurry, this is why it's coming to us, because my understanding is the developers' financing is closing tomorrow, and so the idea is to authorize city officers to let them record.
Counselor Zede.
I just have a quick question, specifically about the last sentence in the second paragraph, which is related to the continuation of agricultural operations, and then it sort of implies that the city council could do some kind of a disposition, I guess, and do a longer-term lease, or the mayor could do, I guess, three-year license agreements? Is that, is there any reason, is there some reason to expect that that would happen? Or is it just like that?
Last, the Planning Director.
Sorry.
Yeah, through the Chair.
The reason I put that language in there is just because recognizing that although we don't have a formal program right now, we have agricultural land, for instance, Jerry Maett does do some farming operations on some of the fields for, basically mowing, hang operations that actually help to maintain the land. So the option here, I just wanted to reference that in the order to make it clear that we may need to, in order to preserve the view and to prevent the succession of vegetation that changes over time, you might get a wooded area if you don't mow a field, that if we're going to maintain that view, it's necessary for us to have the option to do some sort of a lease arrangement down the road in order to just maintain the view, not to change the land in any other way.
So that area that may be done under that is still open to the public?
Right.
Or is this, because I was thinking of like a farming operation where people can't go there.
Oh, yeah, no, we wouldn't close it off. This would just be to maintain the lands as they are viewed today, not to exclude anybody.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Port. Additional discussion. Additional discussion. Hearing none, we'll take a roll call on this matter.
It's a roll call.
One moment, please.
I'm sorry.
Is there something else, Counselor Zede?
I just, I know that we, that land can be leased through a license agreement, but doesn't disposal, this is effectively would be a disposal, that you can't have a license, pardon me, what is the right word? A license agreement for a year, right, without having a council disposal process?
Yeah, I mean, I'd have to check with council as far as where that deviation falls, but as far as a license goes, generally speaking, if it's a license, I think it's up to three years, actually, the mayor can do that, and again, we're just trying to streamline the process by having it in the same order that the council is designating as Article 97 land.
Right. I'm just saying, I've only ever seen using land under a license for under three years, but giving, you know, in other words, you couldn't go and lease, you couldn't go and license City Hall for a year. You're right, you have to go to the council for a disposal. That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, I think licensing, I think, is different, and, you know, I defer to our legal counsel, but I think licensing is different, and the mayor does, can't do that on a short-term basis. We would not be proposing to do it on a long-term basis, on a short revolving schedule, just to make sure we kept the farmer involved under a short leash, and again, it's only to maintain the land as it's viewed today, just to stop the vegetation from changing over time, it's totally different. It's just an option, so.
Okay. Is that satisfactory, Counselor?
Well, I'd like to hear if anybody, I mean, if I'm on an island and I'm the only one that's thinking about that, that's okay, but if anybody else has, is thinking about the same thing, I'd love to know.
I think the question might be asked, is there any time sensitivity here, or might we get advice of council before making a final decision?
Yeah, I mean, if the council is uncertain or has any concerns with that provision, we could strike that provision. I personally would leave it in, but if you feel that that's a concern for some reason, you could take that out and we can come back to you. We're just trying to streamline the processes, because they're processes, you know, for instance, when we go to committee, that take months, so we're just trying to make sure we have the option, when need to, to maintain the space, we can deal with it later if you want.
I saw Counselor Agaman, too, but I'll recognize Counselor Jenta first.
Yeah, I just want to remind everybody, when you go up Hale Street on the right-hand side, you see the pasture that is right there. That pasture was purchased with CPA money like 20 years ago, it was probably, I think, our first CPA purchase, and the farmer across the street maintains that forest, so that it looks as good as it does, and you also see people walking through it, you see them with their dogs, and so the farmer is actually helping the city out with maintaining it, obviously, he's getting hay or whatever he plants out there. And it'd be the same idea with Colby Farm, is people want an open view, they don't want it to turn into a forest, and they would like to see it be an operating farm, which is what we've been able to do with the other pasture that we own. So it's sort of the same idea, is we want things to, we want to see a farmer out there working, I think that's what folks would like. I think if they had their choice, they'd like to see horses out there, like there was for many, many years, but I think this is the next best thing, is to have it actually be an operating farm.
Further discussion. Further discussion. Counselor Agaman, you had your hand up tentatively, no?
No.
All right, thank you. Seeing none, we'll proceed to the roll call.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tantar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Zede?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Agaman?
Yes.
Counselor Jenta?
Yes.
Counselor Connel?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Connel?
Yes.
Ten-one, motion passes.
Thank you, Counselor.
Nothing further tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Planning and Development, I'm sorry, Public Safety.
Yes, I believe it's already been removed, so motion to approve Order 149 from October 28th, 2019.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
This is, a few months ago, we removed, we made parking on Summer Street at the request of residents there, two-hour parking, because they were getting some of the backlash from the garage parking, couldn't find spaces for themselves and their relatives and friends, so that happened, and then the St. Ball's Church came to the Ward Counselor, and then to Traffic Safety Advisory Committee, to let us know that that was interfering with five or six charitable endeavors they have out of the church all day, which are particularly noteworthy. So at TSAC, it was suggested, and we all agreed, we would just eliminate the two-hour parking on Upper Summer Street, and see how that worked out, and we voted out of Public Safety, two to nothing, for approval.
Thank you, Counselor. Additional discussion. Questions, comments, discussion. Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to collectively refer back to committee, Order 145 and Order 146.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Point of order, you said 146.
Yeah.
Yes. 145, 146. Got it? Okay. Anything else in committee, Counselor?
No.
All right, thank you. Public Utilities?
He asked, Mr. President, motion to approve Communication 200 poll hearing item on Colby Farm Lane.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion, Counselor Zede.
Thank you, very briefly. Public Utilities did meet on this. Basically, there was a poll hearing two weeks ago. This is a request from National Grid for two items, one is to relocate a poll, and one is to add a new poll on what is now Colby Farm Lane. This appears to be an effort to support the solar project that is happening, or wherever